I have a little call to be made for the Deerfield Green School, taking the order at seven oh three.
Right.
The first order of business is to review and approve the minutes this September, oh, I think, uh, this meeting is being recorded. And in a hyper fashion, uh, we're gonna review and approve the minutes this September fourteenth, twenty-three. There's a consultation, all in favor of approving minutes? And I would say, okay. I just dropped the final statement and review the warrants.
I just didn't get the projector.
Can you hear us if we're talking louder, or is it not at all?
We can, we can hear you, but it's really garbled, like we're hearing a lot of background noise.
Peanut gallery, that was the teaching staff.
Or is it the air?
I don't know. I can bring you like, a little bit closer.
Lisa, hi Vicki.
Hi, sounds better already, thank you. Thank you, much better.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna start with the warrant totals, and then we'll talk about twenty-four, and I have a little bit of a heads up info for us to start thinking about twenty-five, even though we're not really in budget season yet. Uh, so the warrants totaled, uh, two hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy cents, and there were fifteen warrants signed electronically since the last meeting. Uh, I'm gonna go through some of the points on the expense report of things that I think you may have flagged as questions. If I don't touch on something that you wanna know about, let me know. Uh, but we're still working out some of the salary accounts particularly related to central office, so I don't expect that there will be overages on superintendent salaries or business office salaries. If you were to look at the report on page one, for example, it says union accounting staff, there's twenty-one thousand available in one line, but then it says other accounting staff is negative eight thousand. There's a staff member in the wrong spot, so I just need to work it out with payroll to get everybody in the right line items. We should not have actual overages there. Those budgets should be spent for what we put them in for. I just don't want you to think that we have thousands of dollars of overages, especially in central office accounts. Um, we did talk about teacher salaries being over, uh, I think it's just for accounting purposes. I think we were originally going to pay for a teacher on ESAR, but to save the nine percent MTRS fee, we're paying a different expense off of that, so it looks like teachers are over, but in the end, the bottom line budget will be okay. Uh, so that's a little explanation there. I'm still watching building expenses because we have spent a good chunk of our maintenance budget like we talked about last month. And, let's see. Ground services, we are over, that was primarily the overage on the mulch installation this summer, that sort of ate up the rest of that budget. And I don't think there's anything else major. Liability insurance with the town, that is a true overage, the rates went up there, not much we can do about that. The one account that I am watching that's a new conversation is special ed transportation. All of our routes district-wide are coming in higher than we budgeted for and anticipated over the summer. The positive news is that Deerfield is supposed to receive, the estimate was about a hundred thousand for rural aid. So while we're in conversation about how do we spend that, and are we gonna offset budgets next year? If transportation for special education is fifteen to twenty thousand over, which is right now the current estimate to get us through the year, we will have funds to use that. We won't have to dip into school choice. We could also use school choice. Deerfield has a healthy school choice balance, so just a couple of things that I wanted to clear up there. There's no major points of concern, we have plenty of money in the budget, and I'm not expecting any issues, but wanted to point out some accounts. Did I miss anything that anyone has specific questions about?
You just said that there are things to bring attention to, you haven't gotten to that yet?
For twenty-five, yeah, I'm gonna talk about that now. Um, so we won't do a budget presentation, the first draft won't get done until January. Uh, administratively, we'll start thinking about it in November and December, and then January we'll do the first presentation. But, uh, Darius and I, or at least I'm already in budget mode, thinking about, um, things that we have to plan for, first steps in the budget building process, so uh, COLAs, STEPs, column movement, teacher retirement, so sick buyback payouts. These pieces are gonna hit Deerfield pretty hard this year. We have three retirements that are gonna have to be paid sick buyback in fiscal year twenty-five. I did some rough estimates today, I think we're probably looking at seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars, and we only budget for thirty. So that's gonna be a significant talking point for us. Uh, we have four staff making column movement, so that's important for us to be aware of in that not only are they getting the step increase and the COLA, which is typically about five point three percent, they're gonna see column movement as well, so that raise for those four staff may be seven or eight percent, depending on where they're advancing to. So I'm just bringing these up because it's all going to escalate our budget. If, just as a reminder from last year, wages alone were over a three percent increase for fiscal year twenty-four. I'm expecting we're gonna be well over that, and then we are gonna have some challenges to work out particularly related to sick buyback. Um, longevity request is something that I also look at. I actually think Deerfield's gonna see a little bit of savings in longevity requests, because we have a couple of people coming off of that four-year cycle of longevity that they get in the contract, or three-year cycle, I'm sorry, they get four thousand for three years, uh, once they request it after fifteen years of service. So there's a couple of teachers, this is their third year, and I think we only have one new teacher coming on, so that'll help us offset some of the column movements, but I'm particularly concerned about the sick buyback. You know, uh, sixty to eighty thousand is over one percent of our budget, so, and it's not a recurring expense, but I think Deerfield does a really good job of holding thirty thousand. One teacher, maybe a teacher and a half, or a teacher and IA that typically covers, three is a significant number for us to come up with funds for, so we'll have to have conversations about that. I just wanted to get you guys thinking about it now, because I think it's gonna be another more challenging budget season for us.
And just for clarity's sake, that's when folks don't use up their sick time and they get paid for it?
Right, so the contract allows them two days per year of service, and then there's some additional things if they've been in the district for over ten years. And it's at their daily rate of pay upon retirement, so.
Well, there's usually, as a former state employee, there's gonna be a huge lag between like when pension actually starts to pay you, like three to four to five to six months. So oftentimes, that can be what people actually have to live on. Um, see, you know, the, or municipal, I mean, I'm not sure. I think sometimes that gets left out, like, oh, they get the money, and then, but then there's also like four months of living without pension.
So, with, when they retired, typically you'd be hiring three new teachers at a lower.
That's the goal.
The goal, but it's hard.
It is hard, especially when the applicant pools are small.
Right.
Which we're facing district-wide.
Yeah.
And even veteran teachers are moving districts, we're seeing, you know, teachers coming in with twelve, thirteen, fourteen years' experience.
Right.
Yeah, it used to be, you couldn't move back to your seventh year. You'd be un-hireable. Um, and now it's an open market because of supply demand.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thing is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just thinking that, I was looking at it in terms of like, hoping it wasn't that it was vacation time, people weren't able to take, and then therefore, so if it's, you know.
Yeah, there's no vacation time in the teacher contract. We would pay vacation time um, if it were an administrative or secretarial or custodial employee, but, um, it's sick time.
I just had a question, just more like vernacular. I think that followed most of the phrases that you used. What's the column raise versus the structure raise?
So, uh, as teachers advance their education, so state requires a minimum, right, you can come in and get a waiver, start as a bachelor's, but you have to get a master, it's been so many years, and then you can go to masters plus fifteen graduate credits, plus thirty, plus forty-five, I forget what this contract has, so plus forty-five, I don't think you have thirty though, right? Fifteen, you have thirty, but you don't have fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, so as they gain more graduate credits, they can do column movement, so they have to apply for that, they basically submit notice to Darius that they are going to complete X number of graduate credits by X timeframe, and then it gets applied the following year.
It's smarter teachers.
Yeah, it's, it's a great thing.
It's a good thing, yes it is, yeah. Our own budget, good for us.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Great.
Just one question on the budget, we move on to the principals report?
Yeah, first, um, welcome back, but actually I missed the first school meeting, so it's good to see everybody, and it's great to see you again, Trevor, on the committee with us. So we're off to a really good start, we kicked the ground running. Um, I have the instructional, two members of the instructional leadership team with me, uh, to present on some of the initiatives that we're doing right now. Um, I know Jillian, I said that you would start, but now I'm rolling, so. So, some of the things that we're focusing on is that we really follow the work of, the research of John Hattie, who is a leader in educational research and meta-analysis, and talks about physical learning and the effects that, what are some of the strategies that give us the most bang for the buck, if you will, around impact for student learning? And, um, one of the things that struck me personally over the summer is I was listening to a podcast where John was, uh, Johnny's my buddy now. He hangs out at columns sometimes, um, he was, he was saying, you guys can't sit across from me enough. Okay, thank you. Um, so he was, he was mentioning that one of the biggest, uh, obstacles in education isn't bigger class sizes or test scores, it's really our ability to be courageous. And you may not know what teachers have to go through to be courageous, but we're, but you're sharing your data in a data meeting, and they're, they're kind of holding that as like, they're feeling responsible if students are not able to achieve and grow, and that can be, or even just some of the successes can also be courageous, so we're really working on put, uh, practicing a courageous mindset and putting, uh, different plans in place for us to even just kind of, um, rumble with it a little bit. So we have our data meetings where we workshop problems around like stall learning, or, and that could be on the higher end of things, where students are already exceeding, but how do we continue to make them grow, and on the, um, lower end of things where they're stalled, and, you know, we are not able to kind of move them along, so we can workshop collaboratively together. Another thing we're working on is classroom colleague collaboration, um, which is getting into other people's classrooms and being open to inviting somebody in to see what, what we're doing, or what we're feeling like we're good at, or just saying, hey, can you come on in and look at this, I'm wondering about my pacing, uh, we have some new curriculum that Jillian will, uh, speak to, so those are some of the things that we're really working on as a collective, um, team. I don't know, Jillian, if you wanna go next, or Jillian?
Hi. So, um, we're doing things a little bit differently this year, and a lot of it is, we've, we've been looking at, at John.
At John.
Your girlfriend, and we're all kind of enamored, or some of us are, the geekiness of the geeks are really enamored by him, and so, we've been looking at his work and what are the elements of teaching and learning, what has the highest impact, and so one of the things that we're really diving into this year is that among many of our values, one of our top values is really including privilege, privileging evidence over opinion. And so that sounds sort of like, well, what, what does that mean, of course you're going to, but, you know, a lot of us will, will look at something, you know, you know, I've got a feeling about this yet, or this is, I think. So we're really kind of staying away from that, we're really privileging evidence. So at the beginning of the year, we really did a very deep dive, hours and hours looking at data, and looking at lots of standardized tests that we take, and that's that's the need was, and screeners, I mean, we'll get into it, but a lot of different pieces of evidence, and we looked at that, and we really, it's, it's called a discovery stage, it's the first stage, there are five different stages, but the first stage is a very in-depth discovery where we're really using the evidence. So we're not just kind of looking at one score, or we're not looking at M-PAS, for example, we're looking at many different data points, and and trying to come up with a, a challenge, and there are many, um, our M-PAS were not wonderful, so we're really looking at that, um, and they're very comparable to the other, the other data, it wasn't like M-PAS was, you know, not great, and then all the other data was great, so we're really looking at, all right, what are the problems very specifically? And we identified reading literacy as a priority, not that there aren't many other priorities, but literacy is a main priority, because let's face it, you can't, you can't read a math problem. If you can't read it, you can't solve it. Um, if you can't understand what the processes are for a science experiment, because you can't read it, you can't do science, and so on, so we really did this in-depth look at what, um, the data is telling us, and so we did come up with a, um, and we identified this one challenge for the entire school, this is brand new, because normally teachers come in, we sit as grade-level teams, and different teachers, I mean, even within a grade level, one teacher might say, I'm gonna look at this, another teacher might say, I'm looking at this. So we're doing it really differently, because we, the IOT actually created the challenge this year, um, so that it's cohesive, it's across all the different grades. And this is the challenge, students in grades eight through six will increase reading achievement demonstrated across all the public access resources. So we started our data meetings, and that's really the, the goal that we identified after spending a lot of time looking and designing. So we're, we're pretty excited, um, literacy is huge, as you know, if, if, I mean, the, the implications for young adults and for adults if they're not reading are, are pretty grim. So with that said, we chose this as a, a very large goal, for improvement achievement for all students in the district, and, um, right now, we're just looking at our data and continuing, we have a whole, I don't go into it, but there's a whole five-step process of discovery, it starts with discovery, and then it gets into designing actions, and so on. Um, so that's sort of where we are with our data meetings, and then in terms of the new program that we have, it's a new English Language Arts program that everybody in grade six and the whole district and all of our schools in Unit Thirty-Eight are, are using right now. Um, it's, it's hard, and it's rigorous, and we're, we're pretty, I think a lot of us are really excited, um, it's taking a little while to get used to it, because it's, it's just very locked, I mean, you should see the manuals, it's like, it's, it's a lot. Um, but, so we, that said also, we're very appreciative of the time that we have on early release Fridays, where we have that time to actually collaborate and dive in and look and plan and assess and assess it together. Um, I mean, there's, there's no professional development quite like it, where we're actually embedded in the work that we're doing and looking at real student work, um, and, and looking at like, these kids need this, really differentiate it, which I know was something that came up in the audit, but really differentiate it, so that we're looking at what individual those students need, and just like Tina said, those, those students who are, who are high, like, we don't wanna just say they're good, we wanna be looking at, okay, what can we do for those students, um, so.
Great.
And then the, the third part that we wanted to share tonight, um, you know, kind of combines both what we've heard in the equity audit, and also our, um, commitment to having a courageous mindset this year, and that is bringing in more student voice, so one thing that we're working on is creating a student survey, where we're really putting out, um, actually, we're putting it out this month, kids are gonna be doing it, and, um, you know, it's a vulnerable place to ask kids, how do you feel about your learning? How do you feel about your teachers? Do you feel safe in school? Do you feel like you're being engaged each day? Um, and then looking at those results, and then, uh, you know, making decisions about how we are being in our teams, what we can change about our teaching, about our school um, culture, and about our curriculum, so that's something that will be happening with the students this, this month, and then also, um, families and the staff will also do surveys, so. Bring it all together with our equity audit, and with our courageous mindset, and just be reflective of our practice to do better improvements.
And that ties into evidence-based, right? That's really, that's our evidence right there. We can say, I think our kids are really happy and they're engaged, but we don't really know it until we hear from them.
Um, I was just curious how you're doing the surveys, are they all, are they different, in different formats?
So, yeah, they're, yeah, they're three different surveys.
Yeah, and they're, so they're doing it during their library time, so we've seen Axie call the kids, the whole building, so she's working with us to control them during the media time, and we sort of um, adjusted the questions according to the grade level, so we can access the information, IAs will be working with, you know, we'll cut them in small groups, so they can understand what we're asking.
So they're all written, or?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a Google, it's a Google form. That was always good, for getting the data sorted for you.
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of, you were talking about literacy, and then also the.
Yeah. That's why we're doing some small groups, so that adults can read the question, and make sure they understand, and then, yeah.
Yeah. We work.
There's.
We're also tossing around the idea of doing exit test, uh, exit survey for sixth grade, a test on the.
You can.
But, yeah, we're, we're thinking about that too, to see what, uh, in sixth grade, but how they reflect on their experience at Deerfield Elementary School, so. That's just, thank you, thanks for sharing. I will send out a, um, the Google form, because there's a lot of links in here, if you do have some extra time and just wanna cuddle up and click on all those links and learn about what we do. Thanks. I don't know, maybe what they do.
Cuddle up.
Sorry, cozy up, sorry, you're right. You're resting.
Part-time team.
Trying to improve our reading.
All right. I'm just gonna drag this now. You, you know, Jennifer. No, you're good, yes, I should focus that. All right, so next up will be a public comment. Alrighty. Okay, next up, uh, follow-up to equity audit presentation, equity audit presentation on nine twenty-eight, uh, ended discussion, so, uh, first of all, um, at the meeting, there was we did not have a forum of Deerfield and Frontier and someone else until after the meeting started, so the agenda had us reorganizing, but we did not reorganize. Um, we chose a chair for that meeting only, and we will reorganize at the next meeting.
Next time we get together.
Yeah.
Yep. Or, yeah, you might have to get it before that. So, right, so the only thing about it is that, so, basically, because we had a, because we had a presenter, we take the meeting as a presentation, and so the meeting didn't actually open, it never officially opened, so there's no meeting minutes and such. But we wanted to add it to the meeting minutes of this, so that we properly documented that it occurred, and then it's in place and such. Because it was kind of a, the chairs, the meeting didn't exist, so there are no minutes, so therefore, and it's kind of like, well, then it just gets lost in the annuals of time, but it never, like, this way, it's kind of gets put in the minutes that way. Um, you know, technically, um, you know, in, in following open meeting law, they want you to show transparency and attempt whatever, so there was no votes. It's recorded, um, in that kind of thing, so I don't think we're in any, any violation and such, but, um, this way, it's in the minutes now that the meeting occurred, and, and such.
And a recording is available.
Uh, so the presentation, it was a thirty-minute presentation, like, about an hour of conversation afterwards? Erica, did you have some questions about it?
Um, I was. Um, well, mostly, I, it's great that there's the, because I was unable to attend, I was, um, just sort of curious if there were any particular issues that, or questions that came up, um, and that, you know, were eye-opening or anything like that, but I can also go and, and read, you know, watch the presentation and see, does that include more than the presentation, does it include all of the discussions?
Okay.
Sorry, or I open stuff? Okay, good, um, I mean, I can wait until, I don't need to repeat things that are already been, um, been asked, but yeah, in general, I was just curious to see how, you know, it's, I didn't wanna miss it, so, to make sure I knew what happened.
No, I thought there were a lot of good questions. The, the presentation, he he put a, um, a positive friendly spin on it, I felt, um, he was, he started off by acknowledging that it was a deficit audit, so the audit was a list of where, no, we're not completing it, but he said it, especially in retrospect, maybe later on, we felt that we were.
I think what struck me was the, um, need to focus on the needs of low income, for sure, because that was, was an area that really you know, I guess it's across the whole district, mainly AP classes and stuff, where uh, some don't have the ability or opportunity, or however, they're just not getting into the AP classes as much, um, and other areas that the town could work on, kind of make sure we all wrap around services for people, to make sure that all people have an ability to get a good education, have that space to do it, time to do it. We know, there were a lot of other things too, but it just, for me, struck out, stunned out to me that we need to work on that area, for sure.
I also, I'm realizing, I, one of the things, uh, in general, I don't know if they addressed it in the meeting, but my overall, from reading the audit ahead of time, I was curious if they had specific advice for the school committees in terms of what we should be doing to help from up, because there was talk about like strategic planning and the vision, um, seems like, you know, I was just curious as to if they had any specific points, um, for us to, um, consider and work toward as, um, as a governing body?
I don't think the president, the presenter gave anything in addition to the audit.
Right.
So this is.
And did that question come up at all, or?
Yeah, it was asked, it was asked, yeah, for sure.
I will say, from, from my perspective, that I would be interested, and maybe, I don't know if this is the time for us to be talking about it, but what became clear from my vantage point, how important that elementary school on young age support kids, not only to ac- access equitable learning, but I think this is sort of where we come in. And my interpretation of it, especially early childhood learning is so important, and particularly getting kids young, and so when we're talking about funding for early childhood stuff, which at times can be underfunded, I think it hopefully will give us time to pause and really think about as a committee is, you know, we need to be considering it from an equity lens, and really, is that where we should be slash, in my opinion, well, maybe not. Not biased because I have a kid, two kids in the early childhood sector, but, um, another thing that kind of got me thinking about is, you know, we do have income-based payment options for families, and I, you know, I'm not sure how much the community is aware of that, just, just in talking with parents.
Sure.
Um, and I'm not sure how much they're aware of the deadline to sign up for preschool, because it's really the first time parents are signing up for these things, and their kid is approaching three, and like, they're, they're just not aware that anywhere you have to be aware of what's gonna happen in September. So I think that there's maybe some like communication and marketing that could be had, whether that's from us, or sort of from the school, around really making sure that we're reaching as many people as possible, and maybe that means essentially it's getting the preschool and getting kids young, um, to help close some of the gaps.
I agree with that, yeah, just, and the parents can be coming from all different, um, all different age groups, or, you know, young parents, or, you know, that have not been involved in a lot of this, oh, I need to sign up at this date, and like, oh, I've had, you know, the whole week off to plan this, maybe they're working three jobs, and they're like, don't have enough time to figure out when they need to apply and get the help, and I, I don't know really how it works as far as a application process and all, but maybe we could do better about information.
Right, I mean, even the demographic of how many parents are, um, it seems, just from my own, you know, anecdotal thing, it seems like there are a lot of families with a single child, or they're the first child coming through, and, you know, there's no manual for parenting, and there's no manual for schooling a kid either, so.
Or summer camps, which apparently is another thing.
Right, you know, so this, there's, you just, you don't know about it. Right. You know, so this, there's, you just, you don't know about it. It's like, oh, the second year you get it. Cause the first year you miss it and the second. So, I mean, that's like one level on top of any of the equity issues too. So, um, you know, that sort of outreach to the community and, um, helping the parents help the kids as well as, you know, that meeting of the minds that, um, is certainly something to consider. So.
All right. Uh, next up we have, uh, the first reading of policies, DJ, DJA and DJ.
So the, uh, so right now the policy committee, I think we're meeting next week, um, has the long list of policies from last year that we have to go through. Meanwhile, we still get more policies being sent to us from MASC. And this particular set we received in August and, um, I put it on the agenda because it is very straightforward. It's the law. It's about, um, purchasing, um, procurement requirements. And we're already kind of doing it. So we might as well get it through. And, um, the big impact that this has is that, um, they've changed, and I think I talked about it last year, but they kind of put the policies together. They changed, you know, you don't have to go out to bid, um, until it marked reaches a hundred thousand dollars. It used to be fifty thousand dollars. And that's huge. That's, that's huge for schools. Um, it's for schools, not for towers. Um, but I think they're trying to give relief to schools, um, that don't have procurement officers, which we do not have. Show you his, um, official badge.
I will in two weeks.
In two weeks.
That's a lot of work.
Two, wearing the golden jacket or whatever. You get, but, um, but, you know, most schools don't have a procurement officer and it takes them a tremendous amount of time. We, every time we go out to bid, we use fur cog because it just isn't worth the drain on the one person I have doing everything else. Um, so anyway, that's the, that's really the basis of it in entirety. That's really DJE and the other one are smaller purchasing wording and such. But yep. So this is the first read and then you'll vote on it next month.
Okay. Next, our business is to appoint an official delegate, a mask conference. I am going to.
I want to meet you there.
All right. Uh, I will appoint myself. Um, and while we're here, in, in the packet is the resolutions for that, if that's a lead.
Yep.
Update. Uh, when I, when the delegate is voting, they're not voting for what they think is best. They're voting for their committee. So if anyone would like to provide input now, this would be a great network. If there's any of the use. Um, for people who haven't been, like some of these, some of these I read and I'm like, I don't even know exactly what they're trying to say here about the finish. They do have, but each one is introduced and there's a discussion of each. I have found that very helpful in the past. Um, so you're not necessarily voting on things that you don't fully understand. So. So if anyone has something, I don't know if you have a chance to, to be like, this afternoon, I was like, oh, I should have reminded everyone now. We were just having a conversation about this, but I was somewhere waiting to have service and I didn't send it to them. So apologies.
Someone pretty interesting.
Any spot opinions or things that like clarified or questions?
I'm just looking at the one about transportation. I'm trying to get, grab my hand around it.
The original?
Uh.
Or just preparing and bidding.
Right. Therefore, the original, uh, Julian. Four committees association available to investigate the bidding practices as schools.
Gary, do you have any, uh, in terms of the bidding process? Do you have any sort of depth around transportation?
So, yeah, you know, whenever it's through me, that does affect us. Um, you know, there's a lot of districts like ours that we need to allow it to bid for hesitation.
Wasn't bid one? Yep.
Um, and we'd actually been fortunate that, uh, Gritco has come in competitively, they all like neighboring districts per bus per run. Um, and so, you know, it's one thing. We're not kind of. He just clears nostrils. But the, uh, there's a problem throughout the state because once a bus company. Yeah, that's what happens. It's hard to have multiple bids because in order to, if you want to bid for our district, you're going to need eleven buses. So you gotta have eleven available buses to go into that bid or be able to secure those within the following year for that bid. So it's very hard for one company and some of the others, there used to be a lot of smaller companies around Western Nesta. They're starting getting bought out. Now the bigger ones, and then they, they have the ability to come in and scoop in and then.
What's going in guilt? Uh, and they do all turners and stuff. Yeah. And did you look into this Greenfield?
They all went in together.
Oh, they gave this message. Okay.
And we did not go in with them because the rates that Gritco has given us the last few years.
They've always been good.
We are, we are almost a hundred dollars a run cheaper.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so, you know, so it, it's while they have a monopoly, they have.
Still.
I see monopoly lightly and I'm going to be recorded. It, it's kind of like, um, it hasn't been, you know, some other districts across the state have been having gouged, you know, especially when they went into, uh, COVID and, and that kind of stuff. There's a lot of legal battles. Around what they should have paid and what they didn't have to pay and that kind of stuff. So.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, so yeah, there's real truth to that. So.
That includes special education routes as well?
So special education routes, we don't, we don't have a contract. Uh, we individually contract each route out. And so what we're able to do with that is if we have, if we have a run going down to so and somewhere, you know, let's say, uh, trying to come up with the name of outside program, but you know, there's one in Long Meadow. If that bus run is also doing one with Hadley, we could actually, if they're going through Hadley to get there, we'll split the cost with sending two kids. So we look at each run separately. And so we use multiple vendors for that. Gritco does do some, some small runs with that, but, um, JB transportations are probably our main vendor for that. Um, and then Wishman Call just run over, not run over business, but those stuff. Um, but there's less and less of those. So those, those are extremely high. So if you have some money, you want to invest in something.
Yep.
I am not, I didn't think about it. Yeah, they want to invest, you know, you got half a million dollars instead of bus company.
Yeah.
Well, it's three hundred dollars a day.
Yeah.
So if you own a van, three hundred dollars a day.
Pay off that van pretty quick.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's truth.
There is.
Well, that's, that's the bigger problem.
Yeah.
Complicated. Yeah.
All right. You feel good?
You know.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Um, actually twenty five of capital projects, technical discussion.
Alright, so we sent out a digital file. I also, uh, made a couple of copies for.
Printed off frontiers.
A lot of map on there. It's good name. Alright, um, those who haven't seen this before, everybody's, I think, seen this before. The gray is the stuff that we have completed. Um, the blue is stuff that we're working on and the green is proposals for next year. Oh yeah, I'll share. Oh, okay. So you ended up there as well. And then, um, so I'll just kind of review where we're at right now. Um,
Oh, yeah.
Didn't you have one?
I printed off frontiers. Sorry.
Write on it, circle it.
Right.
Make smiley faces next to stuff. Alright, um, looking at the blue right now, you know, we do have the, um, eighty thousand toward the, um, eighty thousand and then also the MVP grant for the front entryway. It's the pavement asphalt replacement. Um, we did just, um, put forward twenty thousand dollars for, um, engineering for the. Playground. Playground. Thank you. Um, and then. It's going to be higher than that.
We just got the estimate, right?
We did.
Only seven thousand, I think.
Yeah, I haven't gone through a page right page yet. We got the estimate this morning. Um, and so we have to be, and I'll give you an update on that. The estimate on the playground is coming in high because of approximately, I'm going off, I just scanned it real quick. I didn't have to go through a paper, but around like six grand on the fact that it's close to the river and we're going to have to go through conservation commission. It's within a hundred feet of the river. And so whether or not, even if the local conservation commission pushes it through without a problem, playground's considered, it's within the wetland zone. So it's going to cost a lot.
The whole playground or just these?
It's about a hundred feet to the corner to touch the building. So the building is like just outside of the wetland zone. So a good majority of that is, was that?
We must have just missed that last time. So volunteers, a bunch of volunteers.
However, the playground is there. They don't expect a lot of problems, but you know, they're going to want to see, um, because the structure's already in place and that, you know, improvement, they said actually probably be easy. We can do some plantings and that kind of stuff. And that's what they're going to see. But it's more costly.
Through it today, I think their rates are comparable to other playground projects we've done with the exception of that six or seven thousand dollars it was.
So they came in close to the twenty thousand. We thought it was going to be, and then that number on top. So, um.
But we approved up to thirty.
We did up to thirty. We did up to thirty, but I was kind of disappointed. At the meeting, we did no more than thirty. I said you should put a cap on it, remember? But you guys will have to sign off, vote in to accept them, the contract, right?
We're going to do it. They can appoint you as a.
Right. They sign off on the bid after that. Thank you.
Do you need that vote now?
No, we did that. We approved the money to go forward.
Yeah, we did.
To get scope of service.
But it's signature.
Did they appoint you to sign that?
Right.
So I will send that off to everybody as soon as, um, like I said, it was received this morning. So.
Yeah.
Um, once we sign off on that, I'll send that to everybody. I'll send off first to look at it over if there's any questions. Um, and then that front entry project is combined with the asphalt replacement project. Probably be putting the same thing. It's just a different funding line to match the grant. And then we're going to get into the green here. There's a lot here. Um, and we put it in order of administratively, what the recommendation is. To continue the flooring upgrades, to finish up those projects of the A wing. We need to upgrade our BMS. And so the BMS is our building management system. And we think we were running on a very old system that is having trouble keeping up with the, um, not trouble keeping up. It's not.
Yankee board was going really well though.
What's that? Forget that. They're done. Right. We said, don't stop for a minute. Stop for anything.
Right.
So a, a building management system basically is, you know, each rooms are calling for energy, heat. And eventually we can tie in the cooling to it as well, so that we can manage it from one location. Building management system also can, can manage your, um, alarms for walk-ins, um, lighting and that kind of stuff as well. Our current system is very old. If it does go down, we are in deep trouble because we'll probably basically have to hotwire the system in order to get it to run. Um, it, it's about thirty years old. It's running on Windows. And there's no longer any upgrades, um, available, um, to go forward. I mean, the system is very, uh, Frontier's in the same boat and Sunderland's in the same boat. Frontier's computer actually broke down and they had to get a computer out of the basement. We were fortunate that we saved a few to run Windows to run the software that is no longer up there. So we are on a timeframe there to get that done. This is the price of thirty five, about thirty five, thirty four thousand dollars. Is also contingent that Sunderland doing it as well. Cause we said it, what if we do both? Will you give us a better deal? And they said, this is if you do both schools at the same time with the Siemens contract. Um, there are, there are different companies out there. Our company certainly currently Siemens is controlling. Equipment is in the building. So we're kind of stuck going towards Siemens unless you want to do a full overhaul and spend a lot more money. Like I think it was like over a hundred thousand. If you want to go away from Siemens and go to, although he said CTC wouldn't work in this larger building. Um, but I mean, there's these big companies that do management systems, but Siemens is one of the, is one of the bigger ones out there. Um.
Sunderland.
It's Sunderland would be on Siemens as well.
Right. I was just thinking, you said if they do it at the same time.
If they do at the same time. So it's that. So.
Is it likely?
So I had been a couple, two hours ago, I gave them the same information. So they're in their first phases and then they're going to find out what it looks like capital wise. So we'll see. If it doesn't, if they can't do it, then we'll go back and negotiate with them. What does that really mean? Is that a few thousand dollars more? I can't imagine it's more. So round up to maybe forty thousand at the most. If, you know, it can't be, they're not saving us tens of thousands of dollars just because we're built to them.
That's just the panel or is that all the sensors around?
Controllers and everything.
Controllers and everything.
Yes. Oh, okay. Controllers and panel.
Or reasonable in Frontier.
Is that more reasonable than Frontier? Frontier's bigger.
Yes.
And it's a different company.
Right. It's a different company. Yep.
Yeah.
So it's also important because eventually this doesn't include putting the AC units on the BMS. Okay. That's going to be another thing that we're going to go through on. I also have had like conversation with the energy committee about, is that something that we can get grant work for? Because it is actual money savings because right now our hears boom up and they shoot out. We, what are we, you know, we have rooms that are too hot. Why are they too hot? Because the sensors are not reading and sending. So, um, yeah.
And is it just replacing the, the management system or do you have to do electrical upgrades to?
It's the system itself. They don't have to do the, the lines to the, the things, but they got to replace basically the thermostats in all of them. So that the, the sensors in the rooms are up the, the new code as well. So, um, it really is a, you're far, you have far more control if you can regulate. You know, we consider regulating like four or five degrees, you regulate within one degrees, you're saving money. So it, it, you know, there is some energy savings there. And as well, uh, replace phone system.
So, um, our phone systems right now, we can't add any more lines to them. And to even purchase the phones is, is a trick. They don't make them anymore. So we're usually on Amazon trying to see if they have some that are resold. Um, we also don't have caller ID and that is a problem if we have people that are calling in and we want to know kind of what's happening as far as the safety risk, um, assessment there. And, um, I think those are the bigger pieces. Like if we don't, we actually can't even add another line. So if there's another room that needed a phone, we can't add a line to it.
Remember when we last did them? Did we do them recently?
That's.
Not since.
Frontier did them. Frontier did theirs, Conway did theirs.
Sunderland. Conway's on the list.
Conway's doing theirs now. But so they're basically.
And I think wait, these is relatively new. I think wait, these phone calls.
Everybody online must be going, what? Everybody online must be going, what is going on there?
Fix your phone, that's the thing.
Okay.
It also puts it on visual system as well.
Yeah.
And then the next is continue the AC phases. This would be phase three of the AC and the rooms listed there. Basically it's nine thousand dollars each, however, if there's a rebate next year.
Right.
We have to budget as if there's not a rebate, then, um, if there is a rebate, um, the town was very generous this year to have that pulled back in.
Do you have more to do after that?
Just to entice you a little bit, um, if you get all of those, that would be all the classrooms. Main classrooms. Um, and then after that, it's really phase four.
Come on.
You got your room?
Mine was first. Phase four would be all the other. All of the other rooms, so like we have some interventionist rooms and offices, so that would be phase four, but this would finish up classrooms.
Okay.
Would phase four be the number three bits? Would be close to you going?
I think it's eight and eight, and I did that proposal to go, I think we have sixteen more.
They'll be close, it won't be as a big ask the following year. We have a map of it all. Yep, the, um, talk about the videos, cameras, but also know that you don't have to talk about, um, you don't wanna share. You don't wanna say like, hey, the cam, there's no visual to. During the day, you don't wanna take that, just, just, you don't, you don't talk about security breaches when you talk about security.
So really, nobody can see, no. We're looking at increasing, um, just our overall ability to pick up outside and inside.
Okay.
And the technologies, I mean, the technologies we've added over Frontier, they wanna bring over here as well with the three sixty cameras. You can basically cover all zones very quickly, so we put them on the corners of Frontier. And now you can basically see, we can follow somebody walking almost all the way around the entire building. And the same idea here, they have outside cameras that can do certain things, but to be able to have full coverage, um, follow.
Yeah.
And, and again, that's, we don't have, it's, it's security, it's better than security, it's better than alarm systems.
Yeah.
If you can see everybody coming. And then playground, you know, obviously right now we're looking at the engineering and then the question about, uh, those are just some older numbers based on with, wait till they come up the concept, but.
I think that this would get switched from ones though, because the report says this would not be done until at least the summer of twenty twenty-five, so this isn't an immediate ask. Which we just found out in the report today, so.
But, uh, would you wanna get the process going for hearings for CPA early?
So it would be their budget for next year.
Yeah.
So we could go to them as a.
It would be their twenty-six budget.
It would be their twenty-six, they're gonna be working on twenty-five. So Tina doesn't even notice it either, I don't even wanna look at her and say it's gonna be another year.
They said there's not enough time to do the engineering and conservation work that needs to be done to do it next summer.
Basically the conference, yeah, conservation takes.
They need to start listening right in January, CPA will start listening in January.
We had hoped that we would be able to start working on more applications.
So, um, I think maybe, um, I think especially based on last year's working with CPA, they probably, we need to do a little repair work there. I, I think it probably will go this year, just to let them know what's we're planning for next year and.
Yep.
As they look at recreation funding.
Right.
If they're, you know, looking.
Okay.
If they know there's a, maybe it'd be a two-year project in the sense of funding, we maybe get a little bit more.
Yeah.
If they have nothing on the, this year.
Right.
Okay. Let's get back to our push names. We need sixteen more for the, we did eleven this summer, so we will need sixteen more to finish up.
Okay.
So phase five, then, phase four was. Eight and eight, so eight next year or eight the year after?
Right, but that's priced, that's priced at nine thousand dollars each.
With no.
With no rebate, we get forty percent rebate back, so just go easy math, you're getting four grand per back, so. And then if you rebate again, it really, it really costs five thousand dollars. So you really, you do that math. Right, so how many, yeah, five thousand seventy-two, fourteen times.
So after this phase is three, there's sixty more, so we, I see phase four as a priority forward, and there'll be a phase five after that.
Correct, but with this rebate, phase five would be, be two to three, depending on the rebate. That's if the rebates begin, this is all.
Yeah.
That's why we don't put the rebate in there, because we don't know ever shows rebate plan for FY twenty-five yet. But it's been held the last three years, so. And every year we threaten school committee, it's gonna go away. So, um, eventually it's going to, but.
So maybe I just missed this, but when you say AC phase four is six rooms at seventy-five hundred each, um, lower down. It's not on the screen there, but, um, I just, is that, why are they, why are they less expensive?
Alright, so looking up here, uh, this is nine, I don't know where you can, if you can see, so this is, we have eight rooms at nine thousand dollars each. We have to budget for them the actual cost. Okay, the rebate on them this year.
Oh, sure.
The rebate on them this year is, is forty percent, so the actual cost to them is around five grand each.
But I think she's saying down.
But down below.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening to you.
That's okay.
No, it's not okay that you weren't listening.
Exactly.
So I think this is just a typo, they were seventy-five hundred each, probably when Bill added this to the list. And now they're up to nine thousand. So we should update line seventy. I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's exactly what it was. They were that much, they were that much last year.
And it's actually eight rooms are left after, Tina says sixteen, so, look at, this is the beauty of a live document.
Yes.
Love it.
I don't wanna question them anyway.
Just like that.
How do you wanna pay for some of these?
Cash.
Right.
Alright, sounds good. Get my card out.
So basically, so Trevor brings up the question, basically how we pay for buildings, right? So, um, what we'll do is we'll see what the capital committee is recommending. Again, we create this list in a somewhat vacuum, so, you know, if the, if the town was, is, has no free cash and no whatever, we don't know that when we create this. You don't hear rumors, but, but the town is poor every year, so if you're maybe really poor this year. The way we look at it is you're poor every year, so, um, we're gonna bring this, we, we bring this forward and then they kinda say, listen, these are the demands of the town. Education, you're not gonna get that. Then we'll bring it back to the committee here and we'll say, okay, do we wanna apply some school choice to certain things, you know, how far down the list we'll be able to go, and that's what becomes reality. And some of those ones we'll get turned to a two, or one point five, meaning we'll try next year. And that's just the reality of that. So, you know, already we kinda know that CPA is gonna turn into a two, um, boom, just like that.
And generally each year we've run, run the flooring, you know, that's been an ongoing thing the town typically does.
Right, so we put it in the order of which the administration feels, but it is, this is where your authority comes in. You could say, you may like your flooring, Darius, but we really wanna see the phone system done instead, you know, and that's basically.
I think the capital, particularly the town usually is expecting flooring to be on a capital request.
Right.
Right, we usually support that.
Well, that's one of those things where it's like, we started the project, just suddenly stop and prioritize something else when we're trying to get through that. So.
And Ken used to take this list to the capital meetings, I think.
Yes, okay, good. You're gonna, you're gonna come and join?
Yeah.
Great, that's awesome.
So, and then we can, I can prep you prior to that meeting for the final members and, and we're gonna get a write-up on the BMS system and why that's important. We're doing that for Sunderland as well, just to lose clarity of, it can get very confusing. At least we've heard of different, different stories.
So, yeah, I guess just to clarify, are the, are all the number ones, are they number, are they ranked in any, are they listed in like?
They are listed in the administrative board, but, um, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just.
Why'd you kick me? Cause I wanted to.
I know.
I was trying to be subtle, Darius.
No, I was just thinking that, um, when Tina was mentioning, uh, you know, video surveillance and the phone system, the security aspects of those, um, seem. I mean, obviously you don't want anyone getting hurt because the carpet, but how much, yeah, I hope, I guess it's how much is that an, um, a physical risk versus the security risks of.
So that's, that's.
They shall not be named.
Right, right, so that's why we, I guess you have to say, it would be higher on the list if we said, we do have cameras in the building. So it'd be higher on the list if we felt like, you know, you know, there's no, the security's the number one concern because of these, these kind of things. You know, and it's the same kinda thing, you know, one could also say, teachers who didn't get AC, we could say, you skip the flooring, give me the AC, I'd rather have that. But there's also like, you know, we have a project about old carpet getting out, air quality, you know, that kinda stuff, and you know, this is, you gotta.
Yeah, I mean, that's why they're priority.
So that's why we, you know, we can justify, there's maybe somewhere you could argue and you could say, okay, you know, we, we back off.
No, I would certainly, I don't feel like there's any that should be taken off of that, it's just that if you have to say, okay, next quarter of doing this, so.
It's, well, and it's possible, I know that knowing, hearing about the town's finances, I live in towns, I can make jokes, but, um, the, uh.
Five million dollars to see and know.
Just five million short, stop. We may not get through all our ones this year, so there might be a reality, we might be actually having that discussion, is everybody confident with what we're moving forward? Um, and how we're gonna do it. It may be, also, looking at that, is there grants and stuff also possibly available? You know, and that's, like the BMS system, you know, um, I'm hoping that maybe there might be some, um, re-energy kind of things on that, I don't know, they really wanna see energy savings, um, I don't know if they can prove it, but we'll try.
Special town meetings on the twenty-third, Frontier, so. Special town meeting on the twenty-third. So.
Okay, man.
Yep, yep, on Mondays and, um. Yeah, we need, we need money for the, for the roads for sure. We need to get, we're out of borrowing the five million bucks to try and pay back the two and a half million we spent already on the roads, and there's probably two and a half we haven't done yet, just from July storm.
No aid?
None, from the state.
None.
None, zero.
So.
But they're working on it and they're working hard.
If we do five point two on that one.
There you go, green, right, we're done, we're done.
We won't ask for anything.
Exactly. Put you back on.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's how Congress works.
Yep.
We got some, um, grant opportunities, that would collaborate with John Chorick around the video surveillance.
There has been some in the past, um, there's been some safety grants.
Honestly, and the phone thing seems like a safety, like we should have caller ID. I don't know, and I'm not sure if that's a grant thing, that's probably just like.
She always asks, but who is this?
I think it's really hard to put these in order, to be honest.
I think actually, uh, there would be some, some grant opportunities from foundations out there with school safety.
We have a for entryway stuff, interior stuff in the past, so I think it's actually.
Might be a little help. Yeah, alright.
Who does the most, just out of curiosity, who does the most, um, researches and finds out about grants to me?
Primarily the curriculum directors, okay, or specific departments, like sometimes IT will find, the safety support of schools. Like I think we had that for, um, the key fob upgrade paid, was paid a lot, mostly grants. For school lunch, we'll find things related to equipment, but it's department by department.
We just interviewed a, a town planner grant writer tonight, made an offer, so hopefully it'll be great to get him on board and yes, absolutely.
It's hard to get people in that role, and I think you and I were talking about, they've actually started a, um, what's his name? Good-looking guy who is.
Kevin McConaughey.
That was pretty seamless, it's like I almost planned that. Texas. Matthew McConaughey.
Started, oh.
Yeah, so I imagine somebody wanna get on the board with him, but the, he's creating a foundation because federal grants are so complicated to rural schools.
Yeah.
And that rural camps can't go after the federal grants meant to them, because they're so complicated, because they don't have the support someplace. But Matthew McConaughey has created a foundation to support, now this is really Keith Cockings from Texas.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
But so there's rural schools out there, like, so he's trying to, I, I just found it was interesting, like, that's messed, it's like, you can't do your taxes anymore, you gotta. We can't get federal funding because we don't even know how to do it.
Right.
I just thought it was like, how messed up the system is that you have to have a foundation in order to get federal money?
Yep.
I just got that email the other day, I should have.
Yeah.
Just cause you know.
I was going to ask why you know this. Strange information.
I, I should have forwarded it to you, because Matthew was on the cover of it.
Right.
Sitting with children.
Yep. It is deep voice.
He had a shirt on, right? He needs his shirts off.
We're getting punchy.
What's in all those trees?
We are a good bunch, right? Wonder why, one, people wanna come back here?
You should schedule these for seven o'clock.
Yeah, we're going five o'clock, you're so serious.
Do you have a superintendent's report?
You know what, I think we're gonna have a lot more, uh, applicants for the school committee position. People are gonna wanna be out with us. Okay, so if we are. The next item on the agenda is goal setting for the committee. So Trevor, this is something we introduced last year, um, just a, a place for us to talk about directions we want, the committee going, things we wanna focus on, just a way of like, how are we using our, our resources, our time, like what are we, what is our goal here?
Yeah.
So it's just an open time if someone has something they.
I mean, I'd be kind of, sort of, at some point doing, looking at those, um, like, yeah, for the auto and how that could, I mean, that seems to go right in, you know, this, this, um, segment of the, of the school committee. Cause yeah, it would, it, I think that could give us some guidelines on how to.
Structure, our structuring. Yeah, we've been saying for a while.
Yeah.
A little more once we have the, right, that could be all.
Yeah, so, no, we have it. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but maybe next time we can look at, some of those.
Okay.
You know, look at, uh, maybe the full time review, like I'll definitely look at the recording and, you know, inside those questions.
Plus you'll be coming back from.
Yeah.
Is, is the conference?
Is, is the conference? I mean, that's a lot.
It's always a great time.
Yeah.
Get a lot of, you're shot in the arm with good stuff, hear a lot of good things out there.
And it was my going last year that kind of made me feel like, you know, some of those things I brought back from that was about trying to look at our. How we, you know, rate.
So maybe, like next meeting, we stick this at the end so they could give reports and go and we could. You know, spend a little bit of our time at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Where we're not holding up staff to.
True.
Do what they want to do. I mean, you're more than welcome to stay. But usually you guys are running on to another meeting or something like that, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We have our time to do everything. Sounds good.
I just sent everybody the link. I don't want you to think that I was out of my mind. I want you to be like, wow, you thought of that in the meeting, that is impressive.
I can't wait.
So it's in your email. I think I threw a little picture in there just to keep it, just because I'm just sending an email. Oh, I included you, Jen, please. Yes, I just wanted to make sure that you were part of this.
All right, yeah, everyone. Okay, the chair has numbered for collaborative. I emailed everyone, the executive director summary and Denise Storm, I think it was from Conway. She suggested at the last meeting that wouldn't it be nice if you hadn't given three for one to share with my school committees, because it's eighteen pages, not everyone else read it. So he did his best to go down the four pages, so if you just want, quickly skim through something, that's one you want. And very briefly, we had a presentation on a project, EKIM is named it, that has been piloted. They've been running for three years now out of Greenfield and they're now working with the collaborative and it's a project. To reach high school juniors and seniors who are on the verge of dropping out, kids who have been coming to school but just are struggling in the process. So if, they have, I think, two fifteen students a year and are, have been working on integration rates. Often going on to the secondary, to the, to that school or high school. And working with them on entrepreneurship skills as well. So it's something that we're exploring, they're working collaborative now, looking at the potential of expanding further, can you tell me in the future?
All right.
All right, good for Kevin's report.
I have no formal report, but two just quick add-ons. We did a four-town safety meeting last week, just to let people know that. Anything goes, we have three plans scheduled for this year, so all the police, fire, PMS, state police get together at Frontier with the four towns, of the four towns and principals. And we go through our safety measures with them. Next meeting we'll probably do, last year we did table top exercises regarding evacuation. This, unfortunately, this year we're going to be doing active shooter. But we go through that and then we also break up by each town, so how each town would operate. And as I said in other meetings, this translates to other things that we have to do sometimes. For instance, there was a rollover in ninety-one of a, a gas truck or something like that, we had to be evacuated. The same kind of procedures, where are we going, how are we getting there, how are we organizing people, how are we releasing people, that kind of stuff, so. Anyways, that kind of work is, and it's kind of a check-in where each school, including the private schools, come in and we all talk about. Keeping these things on the forefront, even, that's how it was there. And then the administrative team today did our first ninety minute of, first ninety minute of three trainings on bias, on biased hiring practices. It was a really informative meeting and interactive about what we do to.
I'm not, it's a rough day.
Well, you're on the administrative team, you're on the call and you went, um. And so it's, it's, so looking at, you know, what our practices are and not just within the hiring itself, but then what kind of community are you creating to keep employees? The word was belonging, you had belonging after they're hired and how do you do that? So, and it wasn't looking at all diversities that an employee brings from different backgrounds and. As they see on the forefront of the base.
You know Liza Talusa? You're very familiar with Liza Talusa? She was the, she's related to James. She wrote the identity match just educator book.
Thank you. That's all I got.
And our agenda, everybody looking for motion if we've done.
They have motion.